All right, we'll call the meeting already six o'clock, 4:09. My call, watch your phone. We called the Westphal City Council Meeting to order. April 20th. Six o'clock at the 23, six o'clock. Or out of this, call the, uh, call the order then devotion by Pastor Greg Donovan. Donovan, if you would, do yours.
You ready for me?
Yes.
All right. Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's good to, uh, good to be able to just stand and, uh, and offer this devotion. I just want to pray, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be too long, but, uh, but I do want to, as I was thinking about this, I was thinking about how, uh, God in his words says, uh, tells us that he sets up governments, uh, that his hand is in, uh, everything that's happening in this council meeting and in council meetings all over, uh, all over the country. But I wanted to read Psalm 24, because it's been on my heart. We're about to do a youth guide encounter and Psalm 24 is something that we, uh, that is the theme of our encounter this weekend. But I want to read verses one and two of Psalm 24. It says, "The earth and everything in it, the world and all its inhabitants, belong to the Lord, for he has laid its foundation on the seas and established it on the rivers." So I just want to pray tonight, just ask God's blessing on this, knowing that he is our, um, that he is in control. So Father God, we just thank you. Jesus, we just glorify you tonight, where we just lift you up into this place, little God, in this city, uh, this little town of God, uh, in this world that you made. Lord, I know that your hand is on it, God, your hand is on these council members, your hand is, uh, right here amongst us, Lord God, even though we're a small town. God, we know that you see everything and you know everything, Lord God. God, we thank you for your sovereignty. We thank you, Lord God, that you're, you are right amidst, that you're a God that's not far away. You're a God that is close to us, Lord. And God, tonight, we ask your favor, we ask your blessings on our town. We ask, little God, that you would just touch, little God, in a mighty way, uh, that this meeting, little God, would, uh, bring the fruit, God, that you were desirable for our town. God, we love you, we thank you, God. It's in your precious holy name, Jesus, that we pray all of these things and we give you honor and grace, and we worship you. Amen.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Off then, take the caps off. Please pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the ideal with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Mr. Keller, would you do the roll call, please?
Staples.
Here.
Correct. Borders.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Calvert.
Here.
Judge.
All right. Alex is going to be 30 minutes late. Uh, he will be here, so we have a form. Anybody wish to speak to their agenda? If you want to speak to the agenda now, it's time to do it. You want to speak? You won't be able to speak no more until, unless you speak now.
Oh, no, I just, uh, I've gone over the bell, I just didn't know when that was going to start.
That, we're going, we're going to do that tonight, but if you want to speak to it, you have to speak, this is a different setting than a work study. If you want to speak to that item, the only item is you, if you, you speak to your item on the agenda. We won't be able to talk back, they won't be able to ask no questions till later on, until we get a motion, so, but we won't be asking no questions then. Uh, but you go ahead, if you want to make yours, if you want to make a...
Oh, well, um, okay.
Come up here to the podium.
Uh, we, uh, need to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Nationally, to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made to adopt the agenda, thank you, she should have seconded. All the favors say aye. Motion carries. Now we're going to go ahead and do the call.
All right, well, I do want to apologize for missing the last one. It came, things are really had to get in my house with just me and my dad having a stroke and being admitted back home, ICU, therapy, and it just, I was a day late. But, so I do apologize to everyone, uh, on my behalf for that. I was just scattered, right? And then the other thing I just want to mention is that upon, uh, pain, uh, the second water bill after this incident, um, I guess apparently needed a couple people to come out and saw some leftover material in my yard from when I was digging holes, trying to find the spot. They were under the impression that I made a repair. I just want you all to know that I haven't touched one thing since the last time we were here. I haven't hired anybody, I haven't went out, I haven't done nothing. And then again, like that, the last two bills have been 53 bucks again. It's back to normal, so hopefully when we discuss it, we can figure out that you guys found out what's going on, something that's wrong with us.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item is minutes for March meeting.
We have adopted minutes from March 16, 23 minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Graham and second by Councilman Waters. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. March 2023 financial statement. We're going to have ten quick minutes.
I think a motion that we approve the March 2023 financial statement as is.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Graham, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Calvert. All the favors stick by, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, old business. Ordinance, uh, second reading on ordinance 032023-1, budget amendment for garbage truck repairs.
Motion to approve ordinance, uh, 032023-1.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilman Calvert, second by Councilman Staples. Any discussion? I talked to, uh, uh, JR just a few minutes ago and the garbage truck is not ready. They, uh, like one seal and it'll take about three more hours of work to put that one seal on and then it'll be ready, so. All right, any more discussion? Mr. Keller, call the roll, please.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Motion carries. Second, uh, item of old business is the ordinance 032023, sewer pipe change order engineering phase.
Motion to approve ordinance 032023-2 for the sewer pipe change order for engineering phase.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Alderman Calvert, second by Alderman Waters. Any discussion? I would say, note, this is the first reading on this ordinance, right?
This is the second.
This is the second reading. Yeah, because there's a vague.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I see. This is the second reading. Hearing no discussion, uh, call roll, Mr. Keller.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Motion carries. That's the end of the old business. New business, uh... And if y'all don't mind, I may skip around here, give Alex a little time to get here on some of this, some of the business. So, uh, just give down to the canine export, the canine dog, just give down that, what y'all's wishes to do there.
I might discuss that, uh, one of the old officers that handled him would like the dog as a pet.
We're just making, we're just making a motion.
I'd like that motion to move.
I motion that we allow that officer to have that dog as a pet as long as we have leave from our legal to make sure that we're, the city is not liable for any.
To get that motion.
Allow Justin to, or to, to...
Take the dog as a pet.
Adopt directly. And then...
And would you add in there, uh, like in police service?
Yes. Not back to police service. And we're leaving, we're leaving the city of our own responsibility. Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, uh, first motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
The discussion, I think, that we were going to have, I can't remember if we, uh, if our attorney was going to look over the contract, did he get a chance? Did we, did we give him about that?
I, I talked to Mr. Brady today about this and he said he would draw the draft. Uh, he's seen these situations before, Florida's, uh, with dogs, police horses, and he said he would draw the, uh, a draft for him to sign.
Or gun, I guess it would be like a gun. A dog hole fault.
Yeah.
Right.
Agreement.
Yeah.
Relieving us from all the liability and, uh, staying in there as a dog and not go back into police service, that it remained a pet.
I'll make sure that's included.
And when does he want to do this, Chief? When does he want to take the dog?
He's, he's ready anytime.
Okay.
Right now, Officer Wyans still hasn't taken care of it, so. And we're paying, right now, the city is paying Officer Wyans four hour, four week kennel time, so as soon as that transition is made, then that'll, that'll save a little bit of...
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
All right, probably need to, uh, get that dog to, to as quick as possible, so. Any more discussion? Mr. Keller, call roll, please.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries. Did everybody get a chance to go over the paving bid from county? Everybody sing that? So I'm going to go down to that, paving bid, total, county is, uh, give us a bid on some paving, uh...
That was in the discussion in the package, wasn't it?
Yes. I don't think there was anything in the package.
Uh, we weren't looking at it.
Yeah, it sounded really good.
Cost, so.
Yeah, I'm going to entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the paving for the scheduled road, for the roads that are in question. Now, second.
Okay, motion's been made to approve that, that county, Southern County Highway Department through the paving of roads that he did and also second. Any discussion?
Uh, you were saying he could start the work probably in June?
Probably, probably in June, if not before. I know they're up in this area right now doing some paving and he would like to get it before, and some of these roads connect to a county road and he's going to pave the whole road, like here, county portion too, so he's going to be took very quick. Now, there was a section of road that I didn't have him to measure, but, uh, I just forgot to tell him it's a city lake road, about two tenths of a mile out there that goes around to ours, so I'm going to have him to, to add that to it when he get, when he gets up here.
I'm working on Inver Harris Road right now, and that's just right, right across from... All kinds of traffic, so.
All right, any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Staples.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we'll go right down and do the, uh, the ordinance to amend the budget, year end budget and add, add paving to it. We'll get that, that. Sit here somewhere. So y'all over, over the limit, budget amendment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance 042023-2, I believe it'll be first reading, um, for the budget amendment for year end and scheduled paving.
Now, second.
Okay, motion's been made, second, to pass on the first reading, the budget amendment. Any discussion? I would hate to tell Keisha to go ahead and add another $250,000 to the payment to cover, hopefully. His bid was 424,000, so I'm going to make it over to add 250,000.
We initially had 250,000.
Yeah, we initially had 250,000, so I was going to make it, the paving, 500,000, so hopefully that'll cover the little extras, I think it will. Any more discussion? If you're done, call roll, please.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Oh, we might get done before Alex gets here. The beer permit, at, what's, what we're going to do is the resolution for, uh, for the THDA amount going from 500,000 to 700,000. The agenda says that we're amending it, but this is a new resolution number, so we're not amending it, we're just passing a resolution and that will override the last resolution that we, that we had. Entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve resolution R042023-1.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to pass this resolution. Any discussion, and second, any discussion?
Uh, we've already approved it, we're just, uh, the amount went up.
The amount went up, yes.
Just approving the additional amount.
Yep. Hearing none, call roll, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
I did talk to Amanda today, she feels pretty comfortable about this, about this, uh, about this, um, grant. Uh, she wants to come up one day next week and meet her ride around and look at some houses that probably will qualify, but we've got some that are probably qualified, completely tear down and re-deal.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great thing, it's got all the good potential.
Yeah. And the, uh, okay, the beer permit, family dollar. Have material in here.
I think that was, uh, like...
They sent everyone an email, I think, and, um, but the paperwork was provided at work study. They submitted their paperwork and their fees and everything, they just need the license to sell from the store.
Okay.
Motion to approve the beer permit for family dollar and Dollar Tree.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the beer permit, settle beer at Family Dollar and Dollar Tree. Any discussion? Did, uh, did background checks, all that go through? Okay, so everything, everything was good? Okay. Hearing none, call roll, Keller, Mr. Keller.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
No.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Vote three, three in favor, one against. Motion carries. And, uh, we'll go ahead and do the mayor's mileage for first quarter.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the mayor's mileage for first quarter 2023.
Motion's been made to approve my mileage for first quarter 2023, I have a second.
I have a second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? Any questions about it?
Sir, I'd like to see you go on a lot of meetings. Yeah. I mean, just going to the Greater Nashville, the Southern County, uh, meeting with the mayor, those are all good things.
Yep, they are, they are interesting meetings.
Keeps you with the look, plus the form, what's going on in the county.
I just wish they'd moved that Greater Nashville Regional Council meeting to us more than Nashville.
Didn't get reimbursed for the mileage?
Yeah, we paid our mileage. All right, any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Staples.
Yes.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's see if we got the whole, uh, field. Yeah, I can make do that, and this is, I was going to hold off until Alex got here, but this is the first reading, so it won't matter. We'll wait and do the ordinance, the rezoning ordinance for Alleson Park Street.
Uh, motion to approve ordinance 042023-1 for the rezoning of Peno 7 Park Street, C2 to R2, first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, to, uh, pass on the first reading, ordinance 042023-1. This is rezoning from, uh, C2 to R2, Alleson 7 Park Street, that's the building back here that, uh, used to be Forrester Pest Control. Any discussion?
I just, clarification for me, I haven't got a chance, I didn't ask at the work study, but are they going to, is this the potential for going back to a residential building for a dwelling, or is he going to, are they able to continue the business in there, or what are they doing?
No, the business is sold to, uh, Forrester Pest Control, sold theirs to, uh, to another pest control company and, uh, it's going to be residential, be able to business there. In my opinion, they should have never been selling commercial beginning with, from works low page.
Well, I've been realizing that the business isn't supposed to run out of residential anyway, very, on its own. We're, we're wrong either, right? We're wrong, too.
Yeah. So it is going to residential and it more than likely to be rental property. Any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Borders.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Motion carries, and that's... We're, uh, about five minutes from Alderman Jones being here, and I'd like for him to be here on these next two items on the agenda. Is it okay with everybody, we just take a break until Alex gets here? But I'd like, I'd like him to be in on these. So wait us to, uh, take a little recess for a few minutes.
All right, Mr..
All right, so we went through most of the, and one of the things I know that you might have been concerned, it's just the first reading, so.
Right, wait, you're here to sit.
Yeah. And, uh, so, next, next item business is the Baldwin Water Leak. We've discussed this and discussed this, so everybody got a, want to make a motion? Y'all might have more questions, so I'm going, I'm going to entertain a motion to suspend the rules on these next two items and, uh...
I'd like to motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, all second. All right, motion's been made to suspend the rules, as seconded, for, uh, the next two items on the agenda, which is the Baldwin Water Leak and the WWTB Order Change. Any discussion?
Which one do you want to start first?
Any discussion on the motion?
I don't know, no discussion.
All right, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Baldwin, he wants to get back, back to the house, so, y'all got the floor.
And we can, we can discuss these, we can discuss with Mr. Baldwin, correct, if this is in this format?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, can you, uh, I know we've been talking about this for a while and, uh, I certainly would love to be able to help you, and, uh, I just need to hear, uh, again what you've already explained, and I appreciate that, that you have done it, and I know there's a roughly, how, how much, is it 6,000 or 4,000, what was the total?
485,000 gallons.
Well, I was asking for the dollar amount, for the...
The bill amounts, there is two bills, the bill amounts together are 5,577 dollars, and then each of them had, like, one had 305 dollars lengthy and one had 205.
So, so total, we're talking about 5577, right?
Yeah, because I can weigh this.
What, what, what Mr. Baldwin knows, the city was more. So, with that said, you're, you're claiming that there's never been a repair at your property?
No, sir.
And you believe that the reason for such volume over the course of whatever amount of time it was, was...
I believe if, if, I don't even know.
No, go ahead, I know where I'm going with this.
I believe it was within a two week period from when I paid the bill to when they came up to read it and, but I was unaware and me and my dad had left, came home and the water was off, and then I called to ask, hey, are you guys doing repairs? My water's off, and they said, give me your address, and I told them, I said, oh, you got a huge leak, we had someone come and shut it up. And that's kind of where I was like, what, what should we talk here? And at that point, there was like 400 and something, 485, and I'm like, what? And then that's basically where we're at, but, no, I have never, since, since it was put in from the very beginning, no, we've never had any, any, well, I can't say that we haven't had any issues, but no, there was no repairs ever done, no one's ever come out, never have. I mean, there was times where it did get kind of high and I had also questioned it down at City Hall for like 43,000 gallons, and I'm just like, and when I went to look it up online, that's four full size under around pools, and I'm like, I have no wet spots, no, there's no trace of water, and, but this, again, I still paid it, I was like, okay, fine, I'll pay it, so we paid it, three times we've done that. And then now this one is just, like, I was here last time, I had no explanation, being a, a journeyman plumber, I had, I cannot figure it out, and that's when I came in here and we all said, hey, let's put our heads together, and we figured it out, and me, trust me, it's still something that goes through my head, it's really not on the high, high part of the list right now, is my dad having a stroke and I'm basically taking care of him night and day, but it still definitely needs to get rectified because I can't explain it, again, if it's a few thousand gallons, I get it, I understand it, maybe, yeah, but the terrain and the, the, how it is here, I can't exactly where you got, you could have found the water, but 500,000 gallons, I would have saw it. Now, mind you, I know some of you guys have been at my house, I just don't remember who, so I apologize, but where that meter sits, I found that line and I found the connection and from there, there's a hose pit and that's just straight down my yard and then turns right in the back of my house. If there was a leak somewhere, because that's the only line going from that meter going through my yard, down next to my house, around my back and inside my house, I would have saw some, it, I would have saw 500,000 gallons. I, anybody would have saw it, it's not there, and I don't know for the life of me how to... It's not there, and I don't know for the life of me how, again, process of elimination, there's nothing going on with the mains that you guys know of. If that's not it, well then, you're talking about my house, so you're talking about main to meter, nothing's happening there, but then you got the meter, and then from that, then that turns into my responsibility from meter to house, I've got nothing. So process of elimination, if you keep going back to the meter, I know the meter's been replaced, hey, I'm not saying that I haven't gotten brand-new things, and it's gone bad, I don't know where the meters are coming from, but that's the only thing that I can keep going back to, this process of elimination from main to my house, the only thing in it is meter.
And we did, Aaron did have the meter tested.
Right, yeah.
And, uh, y'all have heard the results of that, right?
Right. Yeah, it was, like, a two percent.
Yeah.
And are you talking the one that's in there right, the rate of the second?
No, the one that they took out, the one that they took out.
Correct.
Had a two percent. It was reading two percent higher than actual usage. So, two gallons on a hundred.
I had no, yeah. Well, again, as far as exist, exists, as far as the volume of it, with two people, there's, I, I, you can't go through five hundred thousand gallons of water in two weeks, and not, somewhere, somewhere, somehow. That's me personally, you guys had the city come out, you may have brought other people out, if you got, if we're still at, man, we have no idea what's going on, we don't know. Again, all I can say is that from then, I've gotten two other water bills, and there's a minimum that we always use to plan, it's from fifty-three bucks, no more than sixty. And those have been the last two bills, I'm going in and paying them.
That was with the new meters, with the new...
Well, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if the new, the old meter, um, I get confused, I'm sorry, um, was from prior, but the one that was showing the five hundred thousand, that's a meter you guys took out and replaced?
Correct.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then that really leads me back to, it was the meter. Because if you guys put a new meter in, it's holding, and I'm only paying fifty-three dollars a month.
But the meter wasn't showing a discrepancy. They're very simple, it's a turbine meter, unless there's smoke going through it, it didn't don't read.
I get it.
Okay.
Trust me, I, I understand, I get it, but my point, where that's at, I would see it, five hundred thousand gallons of the water.
And the meter's still, the old meter was still in there for a little bit of time after whatever stopped turning, because it wasn't, it wasn't like it was turning continuously, they switched the meter, and it stopped turning. No, it, it had stopped.
They shut the water off, and then when we turned the water back on, the meter was not spinning out of control.
Logan, you, you deal with plumbing or water and sewer projects left and right, all the time, have you ever seen a me, a meter go haywire, and then work is function, or work is normal?
It doesn't seem very reasonable, I, I'm sitting here thinking with you guys about, as you're talking about marrying options, I'm not seeing anything obvious as the couple.
Have you ever seen a meter register as if water's going through, but it not?
Have you ever seen a meter that water's going through it, and it's spinning way faster than what it should? That, that the needle or the, or the thing's broken, in the meter?
No, not, not any of the cases, I mean, to be calibrated, and it's, it's a regular two percent violation.
Yes, it's...
And I'm just gonna, not, not challenging what you're saying.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just talking, I'm not like saying that this is what it is by any means, I'm just throwing out theoretical of that, I just, it's positive.
Are, are you aware, are you aware of a adjustment rate? In the case of a homeowner having to fix their only, from, from their side of the meter, are you aware?
Yes, now, I, well, are you talking like if you have a discrepancy in your bill that they can adjust it?
An adjustment rate, adjustment rate, yeah.
Yes, I was told, I was told that I can't, I can't told, I was told that I can't do it because there, it hasn't been twelve months, because of the last one.
No, it's because, it wasn't, because you were saying there wasn't a leak.
Oh, yeah, well...
I mean, I can't adjust it, yeah, if there's no, what my requirements are, I have a form that's filled out, and it's a document that's signed saying there was a leak.
So, what, what is the, what is the percentage of a leak adjustment?
You would pay the average plus half the leak, and then this, in this case, because it's water only and not water and sewer, then, in this case, it would be the average plus half the leak, and then the city would absorb the cost of half the leak.
Have you lived there, have you lived in that house continuously for the last seven years? Personally, you personally?
Me, no, personally, me, the last four, my dad's been there every day since we bought the house, and it's, it's almost close to maybe eight, nine years or something.
And how many times have we had high water readings, about three or four times?
Large, large ones, you know, like over, over ten thousand gallons, I'll say, there's been, I think, about four times.
Four, yeah, four.
Okay.
And it seemed like two or three of them were this time of year, each time.
In a cold? During a cold spell, when, if the water line isn't closest to most of the surface that it can freeze interruption? Sure, but we have a guy that says he went out and did a repair out there a couple of years ago.
I don't ever recall a repair, it wasn't a repair, my dad wanted to run a line for future out at the shop, which is about four hundred feet away from, well, almost four hundred feet to where the water line's at, he put it in, but it's never been connected, it hasn't been, there, the line, when I dug that hole trying to find the line, I did find a line running out to the shop, but it was capped and with a ring on it, so it hadn't been set to the main, it's just there. That is what I found when I personally did that a few months ago. A long ago, it was about six hole that...
But these are the high water bills, that, and previous something was broke and repaired?
No, that, that's what I asked my dad, and he said, no, um, he told me no, but, see, this is, this is the tough, this is the tough one, because I'm also speaking with a guy, and number one, he just had a major, major stroke, he's severely short-term memory, also showing signs of early dementia, so trying to talk with him about past stuff has been kind of difficult, I asked him if he has had, and he told me that no, that his housekeeper, I think her name was Rhonda, or her husband Shane, who used to work, were a peer, came out and helped him put that line in, but that's, he, most I know, he's changed out a couple floats in the toilet. Other than that, none.
So if, if the possibility existed that, that there was a leak that maybe you just didn't know about, or a leak that was fixed?
Prior.
That you didn't know about?
Right.
With, with in relation to these high water, high water bills, I'm talking about, is that possible? Is there, is there, is there, is there any possibility, because if it was, we, you know, I would propose that we take a water adjustment, a water adjustment, and, and, and help you with this fifty-five hundred dollars, that's a lot of money.
Well, not only that, but my dad's on a fixed end, he can't afford any.
I just have one...
That's not, that's not even aside that my dad can't afford it, whether I had it in the bank or not.
So, so the answer is, the answer is, is that possible?
If there was a leak that caused the four prior?
Yes, sir. No, okay.
No, alright, not, not at thirty-four thousand, forty-three thousand, no, no, you would see that, you, I'm, so you, that's a lot of water, a lot, and I understand with the ground, but it's still gonna come up and saturate, you're going to see a wet zone. Either that, or because of how my yard is and where that runs down, I know it would run down, and it would run down into my little creek, and I would hear, because I hear water every single time it rains, after it rains, I would hear water, and I've never heard anything, I personally walked down there and inspected it, I, I, I have no idea. All I know is after digging that up, there was no wet dirt, there was no sign of anything, there, I looked at the line, I looked at the, the T, I looked, I looked at every connection, and nothing, nothing. Matter of fact, when I, when I dug that open, that connection that's going down to the, the garage part, that actually had a cap over it with a half a milk jug over, so I know that it obviously hasn't been connected, because I saw it, and looked it up the jug, and was like, oh, there's that line right there. So, I, again, this is just, is completely baffling, and I'm, again, I'm just telling this out there, if I had a water leak, and I'm like, okay, you know what, I had a water leak, it's on me, I'll pay it, I'll have someone come out, I'll fix it, because obviously I don't want to keep coming down every month and having a five hundred thousand gallon water bill, so obviously I'm gonna take care of it. But I'm here for one simple fact, that I'm not wanting, I'm here because this is, this is very disturbing to me, it's, it's, it's something, it's definitely an issue that needs to get fixed, I don't know why it's happening at the same time of the year, I don't know, I have no idea. And I am being honest to God when I sit here and say that there is either that, or show me the raw data, other than that meter, how I could have done it, because I don't know. And, and again, I've paid some pretty excessive water bills, I believe, just for the simple fact of, fine, fine, because I can't have no, I can't be in a house that has no water, and especially with my, my dad. So I gotta have it, it's a necessity, but I, I've already paid eight, nine hundred dollar bills, but there's no way I can pay a five thousand, not even that, I'm not, a twenty-five hundred, ain't gonna happen. It's not, and the simple fact that, is that I know that there's no leak, and to me, it's feeling, and I hate to say this, and I don't want you guys to take me wrong, it's starting to feel like I'm getting extorted from the water company. Because I, nobody can explain it to me, I can't find it, nobody else can find it, no one else can see it, so now it's just like, now I just gotta go off of work, hey, you owe us, you owe us a thousand bucks, oh, hey, you owe us five thousand. Wait a second, it's only me and my dad, and, and not only that, but, I mean, I, I take no longer than fifteen minutes to get ready and shower now, my dad, my dad's probably even less, because I gotta get him, put him into a, a, a tug chair, swing his legs in, and I just gotta spray him down, and then I shut the water off, wash him, turn it back on with a thing, and that is it. That's, that's all, and then laundry, that's all we got.
This board up here is the utility board, so we really, we're probably, we're not extorting.
No, I, I, I'm not saying that, please don't take me, no, I'm not saying that you are, I'm just saying it's like a feeling of it, like, wow, man, it's like...
But you see, you see the conundrum we're in, we have a, we have a water meter that is, is, um, doesn't fail. These water meters, you know, you heard from an engineer, someone who's worked in, in sewer and water, and you've probably heard from others that this water meter doesn't fail, so the, unfortunately, the burden, again, the burden is on the homeowner, and you in this case, to say, hey, I, I've got, there's some, for some reason, there's four hundred thousand gallons or whatever of water coming from, from this meter that does not, that is not meant to fail, coming to my house, coming, it's coming somewhere, and, um, that's, that's the situation we in, because how we vote, you know, determines how we interact and how fair we are with every other citizen and what's more, because if you had told me you had a leak, if you want to change your, and you can change your mind anytime, if you say you have a leak, we can give you a rate adjustment, and I'm just trying to give you the rope, but, but if, if that's your, if that's your story, I, I want you to be honest with yourself.
I am being honest, I mean, at this, like, I came in here tonight, thinking to myself, well, if, if it's gonna go any other way, I mean, I'm ready to say, hey, take me somewhere to go take a line detector test. Because I mean, I mean, I, again, I'm just, I'm stupefied on this. Now, and again, now that it's getting warmer, the only thing that I can suggest as like a homeowner, is that either I, I pay someone to come out and trench it all out, and leave that, leave that connection open, and then through the summer, I can visually sit there and watch it, and if there's a leak, obviously, when that condition, the walk, the whole line being exposed, I'll see it, and then I can go, okay, well then it was a, there was a leak, but you're talking five hundred, that's a, that's not a leak, that's a rupture, that's a rupture, that's a ruptured pipe for five hundred thousand gallons. That's, that's my point, it's a ruptured pipe, and I mean, for five hundred thousand gallons in a residential, a one-inch pipe, that's a burst, I would have noticed that, I would have saw it, when I dug it up.
What's the time period, it got four hundred eighty-five thousand?
It, it was actually three hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred eighty gallons over the course of two bills, but the second bill that it affected was probably two or three days, maybe. Like, say they read the meter on the fifteenth, and it was like from sixteenth and seventeenth, you know, until...
Y'all had someone come out and shut it off, and when I came home, I was like, why's my water off, yeah, because I had no, I had no clue.
I recognized when I saw the bill, uh, something's wrong, you know.
So it got up to like thirty-three, thirty-four days?
At the most, at the most.
So about one more?
Possibly less than that, that's, you know, that's just reading.
And may I also add into this, if I did have a leak or a busted pipe or whatever, it's been brought to the, the water company, it's been brought to the council, right? I've made no repairs on it, y'all didn't make any repairs on it, then how can that, if it's a leak, how can it just automatically stop, and then go back to where we've been going of, our bill's an average of fifty, anywhere like fifty-six to sixty dollars a month?
It's, it's usually a million.
Yeah, I mean, so how, after a five hundred thousand total gallons going through there, how can it now all of a sudden go and now it's back to fifty-three? If I had a leak, wouldn't, wouldn't my bills still, with my water being on, nobody's touched it, wouldn't it still be using excessive water?
Never seen a leak fix itself. I have seen a valve, I have seen a valve that got closed and stopped the water leak.
That's what is baffling me, that's what I don't understand, I don't get it.
So are we sure it's not going into the well?
The well is another, the well is almost another, that, that's all clear down to the shop, that's a good question, though, and I did think of that too. But again, where the meter's at, it's gotta kinda hill, and in my shop, it sits twenty-five feet from the shop, down that big flat park where the telephone pole and shit, so I thought of that too, but water's gonna move in the least path of resistance, so it wouldn't go there, it would go down to where that hill is, where the actual pipe goes down in my yard here. Again, trust me, I, I banged my head against, but the biggest thing is, if there was a leak, nobody's touched it, no one's fixed it, why did it all of a sudden, like you said, stop itself, and it's back to the fifty-three dollars?
And I think, I'm sorry, something else, I think where this came up for me was like that, and I've just got the last year's readings, that, um, going back January, February last year, one, like I said, he's normally below two thousand gallons, and January of last year was thirty thousand gallons, following month, eleven thousand gallons, then it drops back down to eighteen hundred gallons, you know, um, like I said, there's probably been four or five times that these things have been, and I think out of all of them, we've done one leak adjustment, then they've actually said, yeah, we had something go on here, and it was way the toilet or something like that, so, but, you know.
And again, I'll be honest every time.
And it's not consistently the same month every year, but it's the same general time.
It's during the cold period of the year.
And I don't have anything that I can heat, it's like steam heater, I don't have anything that I can...
How, how a year ago, it, I'm not...
No, I...
How a year ago do you not see forty thousand gallons go through, because I would say that, you know what I'm saying, whatever it is, to me, it is the same situation that's causing whatever, it just happened way more exponentially this time.
Yeah, so just, just, just confirm one more time. There has, since the last leak adjustment was, was given, there's not been any leaks found, there's not been any repairs that have, that could have possibly been made or could have occurred, there's not been any explanation as to where the water could have gone.
When you, when you asked the question, you said from the last leak... When you, when you asked the question, you said from the last leak adjustment, I don't remember when that was, it's been a year or two ago.
Yeah, yeah, the leak adjustment has been, because they've been paid in four.
So I can't answer, I can answer you this. Since the issue arose, and I went out and looked in my yard, dug holes, and numerous people came onto my house, and there has been, nobody touched anything, no repairs have been done. I can honestly say that. So no, nothing has been done and my bill's back to the fifty, under sixty dollars.
Under the two hundred thousand gallons.
Just to reiterate what's, what's already been said, is, if there is a leak that's found, or if there is a repair that's been made to address a leak, we can, we can address that with a leak adjustment. But if there is none of that present, we've got to vote in a way that maintains a precedent that is fair and equal across all members of the utility. Uh, uh, for, for all of those members that are consumers for the utility. So without one of those things being present, personally, I, I, I wouldn't be able to vote in favor of awarding a leak adjustment. Does that make sense?
Yes, no, I, yes, I get what that, yes, that makes sense.
So just confirm, there's not been any.
Another premise, because again, I'm, I'm, just let me make sure that I'm now, if I may, reiterate of what you're. So basically comes down to, look, Mr. Baldwin, we can help you out, and the best that we can do is give you a leak adjustment, but if you say no, you're responsible. Is that pretty much where we're at? I, I mean, maybe if you can be more layman, and layman terms to me, just, I'm.
We, we can't, we can't give you, we can't give you a leak adjustment if you're out here unless you tell us there was.
There was a leak, right, and then that goes against my own morals and, and values and, and me just basically saying, going against what I know. So I'm at, I'm at a crossroads now.
Part of the reason I'm asking if you've been present at the house all of the time, is it possible that your father could have turned on a faucet and not remembered to turn it off when you weren't present? Because if you, if you are a plumber, you can pull up some statistics and tell you how much water can run out of a three-quarter inch hose at forty-five PSI, and it doesn't take very long to go through five hundred thousand gallons.
I can honestly say, since I have physically been here for the last four years, now, before that, it's possible, I mean, anything's possible, I mean, but I, I'm just, I.
No.
Right, then I would agree that it's possible.
The period that we're talking about, could you, was you present in what period?
With this, with what we're talking about right here, right now? Yes, I was present.
November, December.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because like I said, me and my dad, I know exactly what we did, we actually went grocery shopping at Walmart and gave home the water. And I'm the one that called. Cause I think, so I guess what it really, what it comes down to is that, or if I may, could I get, could I get an ex, I don't know if we have to vote on it tonight, or can I get an extension for the first Thursday or whatever to come back? Because A number one, I'd have to discuss my dad, and then when you're sitting here saying an adjustment, what are we talking? Because I mean, I gotta basically be able to go back to my dad and go, look, this is what they said at the meeting, this is what they're willing to do, and if we do say that we had a leak, this is what we're gonna get charged, so we're going to have to start majorly budgeting to start paying this off, because I can honestly tell you guys this, there's no way that it can ever be paid full, not, not like, oh, my dad's fixing income.
Mr. Baldwin, the item, the item's on the agenda tonight to vote on. Unless, unless, unless someone doesn't entertain a motion, it's gonna be voted.
Can I?
We, we, we have, we have had two different work studies to discuss this. I know you couldn't make it to the one, you made it to the first one. We even postponed this from a, a last, a last month's record call meeting uh, in order to give you more time to explain the situation. And, and tonight we're, um, throwing away the Roberts Rules of Orders.
And I appreciate.
To, to allow you to speak to it.
And I do appreciate.
I don't know how much more we can talk about the situation.
I.
I mean, I'm trying to, but.
Well, then I guess what does it come down to if I say yes?
It's up to you.
Well, that might be, isn't it, isn't it fair for me to ask, okay, well, if you guys, if I say yes, there was a leak and we can do an adjustment, what is gonna be, what's gonna be my, what do I have to pay after that adjustment is what I'm asking?
We can work out something. And that's what we vote on. We have to vote on that too.
Right, yeah, right.
But, but, but you're telling us over and over again that there wasn't a leak, I, I don't want you to lie now.
I, and I don't, that's what I'm having such an issue with.
I'm having a hard time with that, because I don't wanna get into that realm.
And that's, I guess that's where I'm at. I mean, honestly, it's like, I know, I know what it is and I know that we didn't, so I don't wanna say that we did, but then I can't also afford not to have water at the house and then owe fifty-five hundred dollars on top of that, and, and then it's like, it's, it's just one of those things, it's like, man, then should I, or? That's a tough one for me because I, I don't.
Good stuff for us.
I don't know, man, I don't.
We have to be fair to every system in this room.
I, I don't.
And, and I will say this. Unfortunately, all that we have to work with is what, is obviously what you discussed with us, but obviously what we have to work with actually. And unfortunately, you know, I don't feel like, as far as evidence, that we don't have, we don't have the evidence to think that anything was repaired or done. I mean, everything that we know logically points to something had to have leaked somewhere. I'm not speaking for anyone up here, but I think that we agree that that water was probably not intentionally used. I think that at the end of the day, the city's responsibility ends at the meter, and we have to do that in order to, because there are, there are other situations since I've been here that are not to the gravity that you've experienced, but are certainly the exact same situation. Where if we do something with this situation and then someone else comes along, that there is also a monetary precedent that we will set where, um, if we say that we do one thing with your bill and then someone else comes along with a lesser, you know, we have to.
Agree on justice fair, I get it.
Well, and not only that, we've, we've got to, we've got to roll with the policy that we set forth, or it doesn't really.
Or means nothing.
No, I, 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 I understand where you guys are at, um, and I get it, and I appreciate you. I, I do, but. So I, I just, I don't know, I, then I guess what I need to do is, A number one, I, I mean, I'm just getting kinda nervous about my dad. I want this absolutely a thousand percent on the record, in that camera, on TV. I'm telling you guys right now, I do not feel comfortable saying that there was a leak, but at this point, I'm gonna say that there was, I'm gonna say that there was then because I, I, I don't, I don't know what else to do, and I, I cannot get hit with a fifty-five. And I know that it, I know that there wasn't, I just, not at that amount. I could see.
How many bathrooms are in the house?
Two.
Is there one that's not used very often?
Um, no, not really, I mean, I use mine and then my dad.
Possibility that a flapper had gotten hung open, and then went out and turned the water off itself, that it could have stopped the flow, which could have caused it to shut back.
They get used pretty, no, and I, that's, no, I get what you're, no, they get, you, yeah, no, they're, he's pretty regular.
Look, Logan, can I have Logan's speaker here for a second?
Yeah, and I, I want, I feel somewhat invested in this at this point.
I apologize for taking up everybody's time, I mean to do, I just wanna rectify.
I think that there may be a way to frame this that it doesn't leave with you with feeling like you are lying to say there was a leak, but I, I think there may be it's more of a possibility that there was a leak than you might realize. With the way that the soil is around here, it is possible, the gallons that you said over thirty-four days would be so down to per day, down to per hour, down to a minute, seven or eight gallons a minute, which is not a rupture, and I'm not calling you back on that, but I, I think it's very possible that it was a slow leak over that time. And considering the alternatives.
Fix itself, how would it not be leaking and back down to not even two thousand gallons?
That I don't want to answer for. But I, I think as far as the options here, and what I'm hearing, the board, you guys are willing to be helpful in, I, I think there's a way that you can not go against your conscience of saying, because I believe you personally, that you have not seen a leak, but I think it may be possible for you to, to take the adjusted rate under the premise that it is possible that there was a leak. To me, of all the alternatives, I think you have a very logical premise, the way that you lined up, I mean, we checked this line, we checked this line, it led to the meter, the meter was unchecked, and that seems to be accurate, which leaves really the only thing that I don't understand is that it must be the leak. And that is the better alternative for you in this case.
No, and I get that, and that's what I'm trying to mull is that, again, I, I'm not saying that there, I'm not gonna sit here and say a thousand percent there was no leak. Yeah, could there be, could there have been a leak? Absolutely. Do, now, when I say that, I have a thousand percent sure there was no leak inside the house. Not, I will guarantee that one.
I, I would be, I would be more suspicious than somewhere, whether it was an outside spigot, there was something that was open. A valve, a valve or a faucet was open that, that went unknown.
Right. Then I, I get, I, sure there was a leak. That's where I'm at.
Is it acceptable, I ask, as a, is it possible that there was a leak? Is that?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just go right here because you can't ask me that because then it's gonna make me change my mind.
I can't say.
With my real answer and what I know.
Right, I can't say that there was a leak, but I would say that there had to be a valve or a faucet somewhere that was open.
That, that would go in terms of to explain.
If we convert it even as saying, what in heaven caused the extensive money usage and has been remedied?
Which is obvious is because the, yeah, the water meter isn't spinning out of control.
The flapper, oh, totally. Been open.
I mean, I've had.
I've had that tapping in my house.
No, that wasn't my idea, I just wanted to bring that back up.
I mean, I personally had it happen, but I've had it happen where when you stop having water come to it, well, there it's gonna close down because there's nothing holding it open at that point, or maybe something where the chain got hooked up under it.
But you would hear it.
Okay.
All right, I, I know, I, I just don't know.
I think we've spent enough time on this that if, uh, the council's ready, I want to entertain a motion to resolve this issue today.
Do we need to reinstate? Robert Shaw's award?
Yeah, well, no.
Okay.
Don't leave them.
I entertain a motion that we, uh, allow Mr. Baldwin to take an adjusted water leak rate in the amount of, to adjust the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars, fifty-five, five thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars from the period of time that's in question.
How much is that?
You want a second, Eric?
Our second.
Second. Our motion's been made to, uh, give Mr. Baldwin a leak adjustment on the fifty-five hundred seventy-seven dollars, and it's properly seconded. Is there, uh, any more discussion about this?
I think we've discussed pretty thoroughly.
I think so too, and, uh.
I think we just call for the vote.
Okay. Ms. Kelly?
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yeah.
Orders?
Yes.
Motion carries, unanimous.
May I ask how long? Obviously, we're gonna give him an extended period of time to pay it. It's gonna take off about three thousand dollars, and then I'm gonna remove any late fees that have accumulated from the time of the leak, so.
So if you take that and spread that over a twelve month period, what does that do?
So it's gonna be about three thousand dollars over twelve months.
Well, if it's, if it's minimum plus half, half of fifty-five seventy-seven would only be twenty-two and some change. Plus the fifty-three dollars.
It's gonna take off about a hundred ninety thousand gallons, which is about three thousand dollars that it's gonna take off. I can, I can't totally math it here, I'll have to do it in the computer, but um, and like I said, then we'll be taking off five, you know, five hundred and something dollars in late fees. Because I told him, you know, we would, I said that back in the beginning, anytime we're disputing anything with late fees, you know.
Keep sort of, work that out.
I was like, I, I think if it's fair, and I'm not speaking to anybody else, I think I trust the mayor and the, and the office to work that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree.
All right, let's move on. Yeah, I feel comfortable. All right, we got the, uh, change orders that Logan sent in for, uh, the new sewer plant. And y'all looked over the change orders?
Yes.
The suspended roof is still in.
I was about to say, um, since we are entertaining that, if it's all right, um, can we get the, the short of it again?
Logan, would you mind coming up and give us the very short of it?
I'm talking about water already.
That's good. Thank you.
This, this is a different color water.
We're a tough crowd tonight, Logan, so.
That's a tough situation. But thank you, by the way, for your interjection that was required.
I've been there, it is.
Way in whether or not to bring my hand out.
Yeah.
So, three change orders that the contractor, who was working, has submitted. First, that I believe is probably gonna not have any discussion, or have at least questions, the deducts. So as we're getting close to the contractor installing a few area drains for stormwater, it became clear that it's not necessary to add drains, and so those were removed, that's saving a little more than seven thousand. That's what the contractor did to create that. Are there any questions about that one? I've looked at, at this and the rest of these closely. I believe you guys have seen a, a, a original draft of these at the work study session with markups. Those were initially given to let you guys see something, and in the meantime, the contractor, I asked to adjust several, several things that I was not comfortable with upgrading. We can definitely come back to the deducts, but, um, at the moment, I'm not hearing any questions about this. The second is for changing the gravel drive and parking area, access drive to paved asphalt paving. And so this is something you guys voted on previously. Fortunately, I'm thankful to say is, is about what we estimated, so about two hundred fifty thousand. Originally, you guys voted on a budget change order amount was two hundred fifty thousand, and it is roughly that. So two hundred fifty-five thousand is, um, once we redesigned the, um, plant area, access drive, parking, gravel, asphalt, we give the drawings to the contractor to price out, and he gave us to several different paving companies, several of which Aaron and I got with the contractor to, uh, try to get as many bids as possible, and this is the. Several of which Aaron and I got with the contractor to try to get as many bids as possible, and this is the number they wrapped up. So initially, the contractor was asking for a number of days, I don't recall exactly how many days they were asking for. They were asking for additional days to do the work, but my response to him about that was that this work should be able to be done while old plant is being decommissioned. So there shouldn't be any additional days in the contract, so he's removed that. As well as, um, there's a portion of this called extended overhead that was an amount, not an insignificant amount. But I asked that he remove the extended overhead because what that allows, that covers his, his overhead, his staffing, his overhead cost while he is on site for extra days, and there are no additional days. Just longer, a little bit longer on this one because it is a higher dollar amount, but considering this is correctly-
Yeah, since he's subcontracting that out, what are his tools and equipment that we're being charged six thousand dollars for? That seems, seems a little kinda crazy because it's contracted out to Rogers Group to do the work. Why are we being charged for his tools and, and equipment?
So there is some grading associated with the revision of the layout of, I can't answer that exactly. There's some points, so it's subcontracted, his tools are listed out. But the drive coming into the plant was a certain width initially, and that was wide. And the layout of the parking area was wide, and it has a creative footprint, and there's grading that's associated with that. So there's, there is some self-control in working these two. That's a, that's a good question.
And the reason those changes were made, to widen the road and to increase the space in the parking lot that has a fire access, right?
Somewhat. It was to, it was designed to be compatible for a fire truck, as a large truck.
March back, tell Bill, you-
Good part of it in there.
That's not the only reasoning for that, but we want to make sure that it was, we asked, you guys, what was the margin?
Right.
Was he gonna send this out to anybody else, like Scotty's, or he didn't do that, but I would talk to him first.
I believe he did. I believe he sent it out, he would, he left it out this week, and he said this to me like last week or Monday or Tuesday this week, that he had not heard back, there was one he had not heard back from, and that if he did hear that it was a lower quote, that he would go with that quote and this would come down. But at the moment, this is the lowest price he's got. I'm not familiar with Rogers, are you guys familiar with him?
Yeah, like Johnson-Payton for us in the past, and they do a good job. We, uh, they quoted us Payton back in the fall, and, uh, like was higher than some of the ones that we currently in, that, uh, give us a bid. So they, a little higher than some of the others.
Who were the low contractors, just curious?
Um, wasn't Scotty's?
Scotty's is the low.
They were the ones that, that came in about, was it a hundred thousand less on what we had asked them to bid?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, and it may have been some, a little over a hundred thousand less, but they were significantly less than the others.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that he's gotten a number from Scotty's, that's my understanding, he reached out to all of us, we gave him contact for more, but can certainly check on that.
So I guess my question, you know, is the direction for this at the moment, to approve the change order and the money side of it after? Or are we approving it as it is, and if we have to change it, we have to change it?
I thought I understood, we'd already voted on these change orders.
We've, uh, we've voted on these change orders, right, and, uh, some of them have been revised. What were they?
That's right. So you, you only saw these last at the works today session, that's my understanding, I wasn't here, but I would think that was with the markups, um, the paving, you saw a budget change order, and then went through creating drawings for the, adjusting those, and the contractor did his pricing.
So, if we were able to get this paved at a more affordable price, not going through you guys to have it done. If we were to take that on after the fact, one, it wouldn't be able to go into the role, it wouldn't be able to be rolled into the revolving loan fund. Uh, the loan that we've, we've, currently it's coming out of.
So you have to vote it for.
But would we be able to do that? Would we be able to basically, I guess-
Subcontract?
Walk back this, this, uh, this change order, or like Doug had mentioned, subcontract this out as the city from you guys? To, to, in order to try and get a more affordable price?
Yeah, so you guys have, have paid for the design.
Cause you've done all the engineering that would pertain to this, right?
That's right. I don't see any reason why you couldn't, those parts don't have the marketing, except that it would be in the, in the funds. And I, I don't know that it would guarantee it being a lower price, but there's different factors in that.
And I don't even, I know where you're going.
Yeah.
And I don't even know if he'd want to take that kind of a project on.
Right, and that's the only reason I asked the question, just purely informational.
And, and-
Well, and the other aspect of it too, and it may not matter, but, so if we don't pave it, then I, I would imagine we still are gonna gravel it and then turn it around.
We'll be out of compliance if we don't pave it.
Right.
So that's kinda weird.
How did this get missed in the original design?
That's a good question.
Which is what I'm trying to come up with.
That's, that's a long time.
There's a, there's, there's quite a few things.
Yeah.
That come across.
But, I mean, I had an engineering company to protect us on this, right?
Yes.
Well, and-
Yeah.
And to be fair, if I'm not mistaken, I, I know that there's a lot of things that change on y'all's end, and-
Our end.
And I think it, overall, together, has, has made this very, uh-
Nightmareish.
Yeah.
But to your point, just like, if I'm engineering a project for my wastewater plant, a new wastewater plant, getting rid of the old one, I think I would have found where my force mains are before I designed a project.
I guess what I'm getting at now, the, when the people that this project started with is completely different on their end and our end.
Yeah, we-
Look what we've got here now.
No, I, I, I understand that, but it is still-
It's a valid question.
It's, it's still a question, and how, and how do you miss something that major?
Yeah. That is a valid question, but to you and Logan is-
No, I'm not, I'm just asking-
That's not Logan's fault.
Logan, Logan's a little tender right now.
We'll toughen you up, don't worry.
Yeah, it, it is a valid question, and it's something that we have discussed. It feels much like the conversation we had prior, that we don't have much information about why it was designed, whether it was designed. Frankly, I, I don't have information about why it was not designed paving. It is our job as engineers to design things to code, and so I stand behind that fully. There are times where we are directed to, for budget reasons, design things a certain way, and-
That may have happened, I don't know.
Right, and, and the same with the fence, I mean, that's, federal government requires that.
After somehow got, it got left off the plan, it wasn't, wasn't looked at and thought about.
After nine eleven, that, that was just a federal requirement.
Right.
So I, that, another one, I, just, just a question.
I wish I could get more clarity.
No, I, I-
And frankly, that's, I feel that we are near the time where we talk, we have less things to talk about than I have certain little information to give you that, that things we're talking about.
My opinion on the paving, I think we go ahead and let them pave it.
Just roll it in.
And roll it into the revolving loan fund, cause if we don't do that, then we're taking away from our street paving.
Yeah.
But I would like to see if he did turn something into Scotty's, and, and see if Scotty admitted.
Yeah, I'll check on that. I support that decision, I think that is-
I guess we just ask that you try to get it done at the best rate, well, you get it done at-
Absolutely. It's a most reasonable request.
Well, we got one through all of them.
So we, so we talk about force main tire, and that may be, as we use our well. So, this- This, I think was discussed already, we approved, um-
Permit across the creek.
Yeah, the acquired resource impact permit, so ABRA permit. So, earlier this year, the contractor, as he was preparing to tie into the force main or getting near to doing that, and he went to locate, actually with, with y'all's help, um, to locate force main, it was found on the opposite side of the creek than what it's found to be, or what it was expected in the design. It's my understanding, and this is, I just wanna clarify this because I think it's gonna be a question, is why was it designed to be on that side of the creek instead of the other? And it's my understanding that the design, with the existing force mains and any of your collection system, was based on drawings that were given to us, and that is not unprecedented, that record drawings, especially that age, would be correct. It's unfortunate, and these are things that frankly, if we, if we were starting a new wastewater plant, I would say we need to locate those force mains, even if they are shown on record drawings in certain places. The way that you minimize risk in projects like this, of this magnitude, dollar amount, is to go discover your unknowns as soon as possible. And fortunately, because we're close to the project, there are less and less unknowns that you can run into additional cost. But in this case, this qualifies as a change of conditions. Because contractor found, he, he bid his project based on the line being on the east side of the west, and so he's got to have additional cost and time to get across the creek and tunnel it in. I'd say it's as simple as that, if there are any questions, we can talk through it.
But even after they found out that the line was over on the other side of the creek, they still stuck to that May first completion date, didn't they?
That's right.
That's what we've been, what we've been told.
Yeah.
Until he-
Until this point, I would imagine. Yeah, until he found that his lead times for the materials to get those.
Well, I'm not, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not gonna recommend, uh, extension on time because he should have ordered those valves when he ordered that pipe.
So he submitted for over fifty days, and I told that I couldn't stay in power nearly that many. I told him that I would entertain the amount of thirty days, considering when, um, I, I just want to help with perspective here, um, it is not a way of blame, but I, I think that he could say, the contractor could say, that the city could have located the line for him earlier than it was found.
Did, uh, did the city not, not help locate the line when it was found?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Which is y'all's responsibility, is your utilities to locate them. I know of at least, I'm recalling a month or two, if not more, that the contractor was asking for it to be located, and it got located, and it's because you guys have a line over there.
Let me give some of these here, they might not know what we're talking about, Mr. Staples, he knows what we're talking about. Uh, so the contractor ordered the pipe to go across the, go across it to be looked at. And, uh, there's some expensive valves that, that are gonna be put in place here. He did not order them at the time, until we approved this change order. So now he's found out, we found out, uh, first of the month, there's an eighth week delay in these valves. So my question to him that night, or that day, was, you know we can't turn this machine on until those valves are in place, why not go ahead and order them? Cause we, we're not gonna refuse to, to deny the change order, cause we know the plant can't be turned on. It just didn't make sense to me.
It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, how are you able to, you as a contractor, how are you able to complete a project if you don't have the special materials to do so? So it's your job to locate, procure those materials.
Well, he took a chance on ordering the pipe.
Right, if he's, if he's gonna go ahead and do that, why not order the valves as well?
Right, that's my question to him.
Okay, so they're asking for additional funds because they're gonna be on-site longer. They aren't gonna be on-site any longer because they aren't close to being ready for startup, period. They're, they're not close to being ready for startup on a May first. If the pipes, if we pumped it across, they wouldn't be ready to start that plant up. Not gonna be ready probably till July. So, any, any additional time is, is, that's on them because they're already way behind schedule.
Now, these change orders we were voting on here tonight, it, they're not asking for additional times in these change orders here, right? They're not-
They are on the force main. Yeah, initially, they were asking for, for over fifty days, but-
We need to vote on each one of these individually, correct?
Uh, yes.
So that labor and supervision, is that the force, is that to, to get the force main in, in place? Is that what that is, the top strip?
Yeah.
That fourteen thousand?
I'm looking at a, I'm looking at the, uh, the one from, from you, Logan, I think, the second page of it. It's probably the-
Yeah, in the, in the final, it's, it's fourteen thousand, eight hundred.
Okay.
Labor and supervision.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but that's, that's labor and supervision, I guess.
This is labor only.
So the majority, and I understand, Mr. Staples, your, your comment of extended time, the majority of this cost in this is material.
I think, I understand delays, I understand that, I understand the weather. And I understand that they're probably not moving as quickly as possible as they could. I know there's a pile of dirt out there that's not been moved, it, it should have done been moved. I think it comes to a point that they're gonna, we're about to stick to our guns, and they're gonna start paying us some fees for not, not meeting the contract. And I think we're about to get to that point.
I think we're at that point.
I don't think it's unreasonable to, um, debate or push back against the number of days they've asked for. I think it is probably more than they get some days because of the change of conditions that their bid was, their initial cost and their schedules based on where force main was supposed to be.
How much time would it take them additionally to do the work that was, that, as it's different from, I don't care about the lead time because he should have ordered the pipe, or the valves and the pipe, all that stuff, whenever it was found, but how much additional boots-on-the-ground time is it gonna take for him to complete? What additional work is needed?
I don't think more than certain days.
Maybe five days?
Maybe a week to cross a trench across the, I I think the majority of the reason he's asking for days is with lead time, materials, and. He has not mentioned this, and I'm not saying that we bring it up, but I have had concern that he may ask why the force main wasn't located earlier. And I'll bring that up so you can anticipate how to respond to that.
Well, I might ask you, why didn't you look for it earlier?
And that would be my question as well.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be wrong to debate, I think he may have a leg to stand on. And it could be that it could be approved partially with some days, recognizing the changing condition, but not entirely.
Well, I would recommend this, I'd be good with extending it ten days. And when we get to the, when we get to that point, he's not done, and he needs to give us a good good reason why, and he needs four days.
So what what what? Last I heard was it was supposed to have been completed May first, it was projected to be, had to have been completed May first, obviously, we're not there. What additional days, what date does that carry us to, if we award ten ten additional days, what date does that carry us to being the completion date?
When I was out there before our contractors meeting, what, a week ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, I was out there and I talked to this the foreman, and he said, we're looking at at least July first before startup. He said, to be to be very honest, we aren't gonna be ready to start up until July first.
Was that was that W N O's foreman?
Uh huh.
Was that Mike?
No, no, that was W N O's foreman.
Paul.
So. So we've been here in May the first up until now.
Right now, they're saying they're gonna be ready to start up the blowers on May first, dry start, no liquid in the plant, just dry start.
Right, which I've last week spoke with the S B R manufacturer, and that is what the schedule is, is dry start up, they're moving forward with that. May first has been discussed because that's been the contract date, and it stays the contract date, plus any days that are red here. Was becoming clear, and I've it's it's probably a month ago, maybe that I shared with you, which I really will, about my concern for them not being scheduled. Which. Is not an exciting conversation to talk about liquidated damages, I think that's probably a conversation to have with Mr. Bradley about how to approach that. My experience with liquidated damages, is you don't get as much out of liquidated damages as you may hope, because of the fees that make up for that, but that's probably a discussion.
You think we can pass this pass this tonight and extend it thirty days? And that would.
Carry us to June five?
Carry us to June first, and then we can get with the. Contractors on July first, right?
He's not asking for July first, but he, it sounds like, as far as actual, there is scheduled and contract as one day, and that's currently first, and then extended by however much, and then there's actual.
These uh, these days that we're approving are those calendar days or are they business days?
Those are calendar days.
I didn't know if we were going on five days per week or if we were doing all seven.
Well, it sounds like they need to be working seven days, seven days dry.
I would like to know if they'd be doing twenty four seven.
You you asked, I think you asked this question, Mr. Mayor, if we could pass this. Thirty day extension, and I, my answer is, I don't know that we have a choice, I mean, I mean, we do have a choice, we can continue to. Try to revise and try to try to figure out ways to cut and stop creating the hole that we're in, but at the end of the day. We're we're, I think the inevitable is still gonna occur, that we're gonna have uncompletion, an uncompleted multi-million dollar project. That I'm just gonna, I don't, I'm just gonna say this, that that is something, I just, I'm ready, I'm ready for this project to be behind us. Well, because of the, because of all the things that we've we've had come come across, that. All of a sudden, we're not in in the original plans, and I think that's our biggest frustration, is that it's not in the original plan, but here they are, and now we have regulations. A fence, like, you know, like you said, has to be, has to be part of the the package now, to to complete the deal and to seal the 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 deal, and us to walk away knowing we finally completed. One of the biggest projects that Westmoreland's ever had. Well, and so. How do you stop it? How do you stop the sweep?
From their perspective, what is the precedent though? If for some reason we push back and we don't give them the days that they want, and, you know, we inevitably get to the point where that they're not done, they're supposed to be done. You know, the other aspect of this is that we can, we could inadvertently create a situation where we're keeping it from happening as well.
Right, right, no, I, if if we. We we need to get the project done, but we also need to hold them accountable for.
That's kind of where I'm.
Their lack of action too.
Well, the way I understand, if we extended another thirty days, and then that thirty days, we're gonna stick to our guns, they still got to keep on working, they've got to complete the plant, is that right? They can't just walk off.
That's right.
So they already extended it six months, because it was supposed to have been completed October first. I mean. In all reality, we've extended it six months, seven months.
For valve reason.
You're right, I'm right.
But but to a point, we've extended it seven months from the initial completion date that they set forth to us. How many more times do we need to keep kicking this can down the road? I mean.
Which one's got them?
What's what's an acceptable amount of days to to tell them that, look, we've we've set a firm line, we're we're not willing to pay you any more for your your inaction. I mean. If it's gonna take him a week to do to cross that creek, I say we give him a week, if that's what, if that's where the source of this this additional days is coming from. I'm I'm not willing to pay him anything more than what additional work they're actually gonna have to do.
That's what I said, their days on site. For this work that that they're doing. That, like I say, the extra week to cross the creek, but other than that, they're they're gonna be on site regardless, because they aren't close to being ready to anyway.
So when was the, when was the valves ordered? Like what?
Oh, have they been ordered?
They have been ordered.
They what?
They have been ordered.
Because you were talking about earlier about the eight week lead down, so I'm just trying to.
Well, I think Aaron said that they were available in bowling green, I don't know if they found out or not, but.
It's mine to say that.
He told me he found the valves.
Yeah. It's mine to say that those turned out to not be.
They didn't.
Media spec.
A S I spec.
Yeah, A I S.
A I S.
Yeah. The the three things, I mean. I don't think it's wrong to say, it would only take a week to cross the creek, just remembering the pieces of lead time is.
So it's two months.
The reason that the seven months was extended was purely on lead time for materials.
And that's kind of where I'm getting at, so right now, they're saying they can't get the job done for two more months, because they, we're in the, we're in the electrical panel situation again. Where there's there's a, an obviously detrimental piece of equipment that's not there.
But here's my thing, so I I lived through COVID too, I experienced all the extended lead times, I experienced going through, trying to order stuff and and having to plan ahead to order stuff because, to get it by a certain deadline, because. It's common knowledge that the lead times are extended. He's already had the the schedule extended seven months due to lead times. If I come across that, I'm probably gonna start looking to things I have to purchase later on down the road, or order later on down the road, to say, hey, what's my lead time on this? Hey, maybe I need to go ahead and plan ahead for this, so that way I can have it here by the time that I'm supposed to have it here. I mean, I I bought appliances, because I redid the kitchen throughout, while the pandemic was going on, I found out that appliances were a four month lead time, you know what I did? Four months before work was supposed to start in my kitchen, I went and bought appliances. I planned ahead for that.
I hear you, it's it's when.
So I'm 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 to the point where I'm not willing to listen to lead time being a reason for him to ask for an extraordinary amount of days to do five days worth of work.
You run the challenges when you uncover something in a time of the issue in a certain place, and then your lead time extends to you, I I hear you.
But who's holding, who's holding them accountable?
About what?
It was my understanding, it was it was it was told to us before. That the engineer was supposed to hold them accountable and make sure that they stuck to that schedule.
Exactly.
And the representative from G M C was on site, and that's why we had to approve a change order for additional days for G M C. Was so that they had someone here to maintain and and stay on top of the the contractor to make sure that they were holding their line and 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 doing what they were expected to be done, or expected to have done. As it was laid out on the schedule, so again. Who do we need to go to and speak to personally to make sure that they hold this line, whatever date we set, whether we approve five days, we approve thirty days or fifty days? Who do we need to go talk to to ensure that this, we have a hard date, and let them know, we are not extending this any further? And if they go beyond whatever we approved here tonight, that's it.
It's on them.
That's on you.
I think we're looking at the ones that are holding, we hired you, Logan, we hired y'all's company, you will, you will, G M C is working for us, not W N O, you're working for us.
That's right.
So whatever date we set, I think y'all have got to hold them to it.
We do, and I. We are on site to ensure that the work is done, whether it's on, as you guys need, and to make sure that they don't cut any corners. We are not, within our responsibilities, allowed to to push or control or direct work, and so that's the reason that the contract is written. When you say who's holding them to the schedule, the contract holds the schedule, and any additional days that are given to them by your voice to bring them.
And they're they're the ones that set the completion date, we're very prepared, and I and I understand, things happen, I understand that, but they're the ones that set the completion date, not you, not us, they did.
And they are held to that by the contract.
And so.
So what would it take, I mean, obviously, you're here for it, but what would it take for W N O to be here? To be able to have that discuss, and and I'm just simply bringing this up, I don't know that it would be fruitful or that it's even productive, but.
I I know some of y'all cannot be at the construction meetings, but W N O are at the construction meetings.
Right, right.
First month, and that's that's when you, I mean, I don't know if you get W N O to a work study, I don't know if.
Yeah, and I'm just asking the question, you know, there's a possibility that we could all be, and and to me, it's twofold, you know, that would be a. I feel like that's a work-study thing, where, you know, it could go both ways, he could be able to speak to all of us at once directly about what's going on, because I feel like at this point. It it feels like the closer we get to this, that we need more direct answers about what's going on and why things aren't happening. Because right now, the project as a whole, it it doesn't feel like. It it feels like that these things as a whole keep coming up, and at the end of the day, I think we're the ones truly that are holding them accountable by the contract, and we're in.
We're enabling them by extending this contract, continuing to extend this contract.
Yeah, it it's not without reason, any extensions that this board has approved, in my opinion, have been baffled. Mayor, I I'm actually pleased to hear when you said initially, I don't think that I'm comfortable with reviewing all thirty days. I reviewed this initially to weed out anything that I knew was unreasonable, but if you're asking my opinion on this, I. I don't think, materials have been ordered, that's moving forward, I made sure that he was not going to wait for approval from this to release, I think that would have been a challenge. It seems reasonable to me, considering where they are in the schedule. I'm pleased to hear, when I say it that way. Then you feel the urgency of saying and putting pressure on W N O to complete the project. And I, I think you could approve all of this, and then hold them accountable when it comes time, when that day comes, but this may be a time to have some. Honest conversation about, hey, we are concerned with your progress, and. We need you to know that we're gonna be here to approve the valid delays and give you the time that you're due, and if there's time in here that is due, then this board is reasonable, is gonna approve those, but. We're not just gonna take thirty days and just approve it because you submitted it, we we are going to tell you that we we feel like ten days is is reasonable, and. I think that should be a discussion, and I don't know if it was explicitly asked, but I think you can absolutely ask that David Pym be here, extend this, push this.
Is he the lead contractor or W N O?
Well, and 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 to that point. And someone correct me if I'm wrong, if they feel like that I'm speaking out of term, I don't think that it is out of the question that maybe moving forward, if they need to request an extension, then they need to be the one to ask for it here.
I'll agree with that.
Because, and I, there's no diss towards you, G M C, but at this point. I think that they need to be accountable for the changes that are in in time, they need to be accountable, and they need to be able to speak directly. And I'm sure even G M C is limited in what they know about the project, as opposed to literally what they're doing on site, because they're the ones actually doing all the work.
Let's let's request it, they got two weeks to get me here.
They got two weeks to be here, but they intended to be approved.
Till April fourth, six o'clock.
And and I think we just set the precedent that going forward that. This, when it specifically comes to additional time, then they need to be able to back up.
Well. I support that.
If we're not gonna vote on this.
So do we, do we need to vote on some of this tonight, or just wait?
I'm I'm not sure what what. I'm not sure. What's your.
I have an opinion of that, I mean, my opinion would be, I'd rather, I mean, I'd like to hear what, I'd like to go ahead and just have W N O. Be here and answer to their reasons why this isn't completed, and what timeframe they think that it's gonna need to be completed, and all those other questions we can ask and address. I don't I don't see a reason to vote on anything tonight, I mean, I don't even know how we can.
Well, I I can I can.
I can make a motion to table, we talked a lot about it.
I can end the, I can end the discussion part here, and call for a motion, and if nobody makes a motion, then the motion fails, it's kind of the item fails for lack of motion. So that's, I'm gonna call the the discussion in, and retain a motion to approve. Does W N O T P change orders?
Can, I just wanna make sure. If there is a way to approve the others and not just the force main, is that's, just asking a question, do you guys want to approve the the deducts, because there are three, there's deducts, the paving. I'm hearing that the force main is the only one that you guys would like them to speak to.
Yeah, we can do that if if it's possible to do that.
I make a motion, we approve the change order for the deducts from the project, as presented by W N O.
If that includes the paving too.
That'd be the first, it depends on how you want it ordered.
That didn't include the paving.
No, that's.
That was just the pot, the wastewater drainage that was.
Stormwater.
It's not longer needed. In fact, stormwater drainage, yeah, sorry.
That is.
It's worth like eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, seven thousand.
I, I made a motion to, to approve the deductions as presented by W N O.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made, and second, to approve the change order for the deductions. By W N O. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
For the area drains.
For the area drains. Any more discussions? I think we've probably had enough. Call, call room, Ms. Kelly.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
All right, motion carries on that one.
Can I ask a question on these others too?
Yeah.
Prior to, I mean, I know, rules are still suspended, but I just wanted to make sure. If we defer these, if a motion were made to defer these to the work study. Requiring W N O's presence. Would that be? Better than a failure for lack of motion? And that would be more what we were looking for, right?
Yeah, that's probably, um. One of them's for the, one of them's for the paving and one of them's for the drainage, right?
The tie.
So do we have any issues? I'd like to hear, hear W N O's on, if Scotty's come back, so.
Yeah, I think you could do it either way.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're talking about is probably going to be the best way.
Okay.
I make a motion to defer the change order pertaining to the paving. So we can hear back from outstanding bids from the remaining, uh.
Contractors.
Contractors.
Dan, Dan, too, you're from W N O, is that as well? Do you also want to speak to that?
Not on this one.
Yep.
Because that one, that one, I mean, we, so that's all been asked and answered, I think, right?
All right.
Aside from the bid.
Yeah, the bids are what you want.
That was the only thing we were waiting on for the paving was, was the remaining bid from Scotty to see if it came in.
If they're getting those.
If they're getting them, yeah.
But, but if they're here at work today, we can.
We can ask them that too.
I, I second, I was dangling there.
Motion's been made in second, uh, to defer the change order on the paving. And on a deferral, there's no discussion, call room. Ms. Kelly.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. We'll have a motion on the, uh, change order on the force main.
Make a motion to defer the force main change order, um, until the May work study, at which time it's requested that W N O's presence or representative from there is present.
I second that.
All right, motion's been made in proper second, there's no discussion on the deferral, Ms. Kelly, call room.
Staples.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. With that being said, I believe I completes our agenda. I entertain a motion. So moved, motion to adjourn, this is not a debatable order, just crossing out. May adjourn.